Oh, we ready? Try all that.
That's okay, all set. I will call the Finance Committee to order. Mark your next.
Yep, I'm just trying to get rid of my gong. I'd like to also call the Board of Trustees to order and welcome everybody. And we'll call for Finance.
Bender.
Here.
Ermely.
Here.
Menel.
Here.
Oldenburg.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Do you want me to do the board right away?
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Ermely.
Here.
Beanie. Not together, baloney.
Here.
Menel.
Here.
White.
Here.
Zhong.
Here.
Zigami.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous joint meeting of October 4th, 2021. Never know what should do. Do I have a motion here, please?
Also move.
Motion by Bender.
Second.
Oh, second by Simmons, you said it so silently, um, it's been hearing. Um, okay, and then the board has to do a motion.
Same motion for the board? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I do have a question, but just to.
Hold on, did we vote?
No.
No, that's what I was referring, I was gonna ask is, do they have to vote on it first?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I jumped in.
Yes. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the joint, the minutes from the previous joint meeting on October 4th, 2021.
Motion by Zhong, second by Zigami, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask a question because I never know if Mark should be doing this or a public comment.
Well, isn't it technically the Finance meeting?
Yes.
And we're joint, so that's why it's really your time slot.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make up, so you and I aren't.
I would've said something.
All the comments? Okay, anything from the Zoom meeting by computer? Uh, nothing by phone? Okay, acknowledge work product transmitted September budget status report.
We attached a narrative in the packet. Nothing too exciting to point out. Were there any questions about it?
Any questions on the budget status? Okay, hearing none, um, do I have a motion to acknowledge the work product of the budget status report?
So move.
Motion by Menel.
I'll second.
Second by Bender. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Okay, educational presentations and reports, health insurance presentation.
Can we get the board doing knowledge of the September budget status quick? Because it is not on the board agenda.
Sure.
Sorry, Corey.
Uh, the same motion for the board?
I'll make the motion to approve these.
Motion by Zhong.
Acknowledge.
Oh, acknowledge, okay.
Second by White.
Sure.
Um, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm Corey with Spectrum Benefits, the broker that helps you with your benefits. Last year, we moved you to the co-op plan. And we came in at a 0% increase this year for the Village of Weston. So that was the, I think, the first time we were able to offer you a 0% increase on the health insurance. Um, the first spreadsheet that you'll notice on the right-hand side, you have two of them. So the first one has page one on it. You currently offer two different plan designs to the employees of the Village, Everest Metro and Safer. The first one on the far left is a traditional health plan with a $3,000 deductible and office and prescription drug copays. And the one in the middle with a $2,000 deductible is a high deductible health plan with a health savings account attached to that. And the Village does contribute some money towards that. It's up to you, if you'd like to continue that contribution going into 2022. Um, on the right-hand side of that is an option one. The co-op does have an option to increase that deductible to a $3,000 deductible. As an option for this year. We did have an insurance committee meeting. And the budget this year, my understanding is, was a zero budget for an increase to insurance. So, and I don't know if that was because we have the co-op plan in place now, this is our third year. And the last two years, we did have 0% increases. So this is our third year going into our co-op plan with a zero. So it's very good that we were able to put you in that plan last year. So, um, the insurance committee meeting, when we did meet about two weeks ago. Thought that because the budget was zero and that the employees were satisfied with security health plan as the administrator. Would like to keep the current plan designs the same moving forward into 2022. The option shown on page one is just a higher deductible plan. Add a $3,000 deductible, steam network, everything as current as far as your provider network. It does offer premium savings. So we did want to show that you do have a plan option that would offer premium savings. Page two. These are exactly the same plan designs as far as deductibles. Security health plan does have a narrow network. Which is called simply one. It would mean that your employees would only be able to utilize Marshfield Clinic. And not utilize Aspiris and other providers around the state. So this is an option, you could offer it as a dual choice. Where you have this option in place along with the premier option that they currently have. This does not mean that you have to offer it this year. It's just an option that we put in play that's just something to consider. When it was brought up with the insurance committee. We actually, the discussion was had that because it was a 0% this year. They thought that maybe they would keep any plan design changes and/or network option changes for a year that if there was an increase by the cooperative. That we would have options to move to different plan designs and network at that time to lower premium. And not necessarily do plan design changes or network changes when we offered a 0% increase this year. Does anybody have any questions or anything for me? I can give you a little background on how the cooperative is running, if you'd like to know that. Or if you're just interested in currently what your plans are or what the renewal is for you, that's fine. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was asking if there was any question.
With our, um, with our, you know, addition, we jumped on, how many more after us?
There are currently 92 groups within the cooperative as of right now. We have five more that have been accepted for tenure this year.
Okay. Fantastic.
Um, I can tell you, hang on.
It's, you don't have to say.
Okay, yep, there's 92 groups, there's.
Is there a ceiling?
Right now, our co-op license of the state of Wisconsin is 200.
Oh, okay.
So we have to apply with the state to get an additional co-op license.
Okay.
We do have a not to exceed in place with, um, security help plan for next year. Our loss ratio at this point in time. The loss ratio is at about an 83%. So that's very good as far as where we're running. If we have anything below an 88% with the insurance company, we get 0% increases. And we do that, have that in play again for next year.
That's it for me. Anyone else?
Keith? I'll just, I guess I'll just jump in and say that I did have some discussion with Chief Schultz, I didn't contact, um. Safer, but I guess I, we were kind of in the same camp, but yes, we, we have some options. I guess, good news is we don't have an increase. I guess we felt that because of some of the issues going on right now in the labor market. And I was just looking at the, we also have. Human Resources Committee agenda from last week, and they're talking about all kinds of issues, you know, relation to detention and recruiting of employees. And certainly, I think we could look at. You know, offering some of these, maybe even a narrow network plan at some point. I don't feel it's appropriate to force people there right now. I think we should be looking at this as an HR issue as well as a finance issue. And, uh, I think take some time to look at this so that we can make sense of what it's gonna be, uh. And obviously, the realities of budgeting are gonna be here to deal with as time goes forward as well. So, uh, as Corey said, I guess, you know, the, our recommendation with the administration, our finance director here is that we stay with the plans this year. That the same plan designs we had last year.
I agree. I think to take some time and celebrate. This is fantastic. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Question, well, I guess is that the discussion on the. An action on health plan options. Anybody have any more comments of, um, new health issues? Do you have a recommendation for the board?
I recommend that the board trustees continue offering current health plans to employees for 2022 with no additional. Second.
Second by Simmons. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. And, um. Just, do you have the board taking action now or later? Okay. Mark?
Now, okay, I thought it was on the next one. So same motion for the board?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zigami.
Second.
Second by Zhong, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Okay, review and discussion of the 2022 budgets.
No, you skipped.
Item nine.
Oh, item nine, okay, discussion and possible action on HSA contribution.
So, in the RSC, I went through and explained how the. Amount contributed to the employees was determined. The. Start over, the board decided to offer the same benefit to all employees. That benefit was health insurance and they decided to contribute the same amount to everyone, no matter what type of plan they chose. So how that worked out for those who chose the HSA is we decided the employer portion for the HSA. And then the employer portion for the traditional. And for the family, that was $19,147 versus $18,029. As a result, the village contributed $1,001.18 to all employees who took family. There were lesser amounts for the others, but that's how it was determined. For the 2021 plan, approximately 30 people participated in the high deductible plan. The health savings, the amount contributed was about $19,430 for all those people. Is there, I guess, that's how it was decided, what kind of comments do we have?
My only question is, was that the village really isn't saving anything? Correct?
So, the difference between the premium payment for the employees is $7. So the reason why we decided to have that little carrot is so that more people would maybe choose the HSA. No, there's no savings currently, but in the future, if the village board were to decide to move that only offering certain plans. Um, I think the acceptance would be a lot better. It was more of a benefit for the employees to have options for plans, not necessarily savings for the village. That was the purpose of offering different plans last year.
Right. Yeah, we had that same discussion last year.
Yeah.
You know, the not savings part, but to get it started. Yep, okay. So $7 difference on premium?
That's for the employees.
Right, every two weeks, right?
Yeah, that's for family employees.
Okay.
Oh, and then the village picture. Any other discussions? Uh, any recommendations of the finance?
I recommend the board trustees continue contributing to the employee HSA similar to 2021.
By Bender.
Second by Bender.
On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so carried.
Same motion for the board?
Promote the village continued contribution to the health saving accounts similar to 2021.
Motion by Zigami.
Second.
Second by Ermely. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Now, review and discussion of 2022 budget, then the funded expenditures and so forth.
So this is the hopefully final presentation of our budget prior to publication. So, um, where were we? We were at a deficit of $145,432. And currently, we got a balanced budget. How did we get there?
Yeah.
So the revenue changes increased a total of $135,000. So residential permits, we took a deeper look at the new subdivision that's gonna go on Alderson. So we bumped up the revenues there. General transportation aids, we did get final notice from the state that we'd be receiving additional funds there. Mobile homes, we looked at and with the current trend, we felt comfortable increasing it $3,000. Joint fire district taxes, um, so this is an additional $70,000 that we were to, that we plan on adding to the levy. After much discussion with the state, we're pretty comfortable that we're gonna be able to get there. Um, we had some discussion at the Safer meeting that we're gonna adjust their CIP. Request CIP budget. So next year, when we do ask for, have a larger request for CIP. That there's a good chance that we're gonna be able to continue using the joint fire district line in the future. So there's gonna be some planning there that Safer and the finance departments will be working with. And hopefully, we can always use that line because that's a large chunk of change that we cannot raise any other way. So, and then we applied the budget surplus of $19,000. That $19,000 went to the court plan for the Parks Department. So it was a one-time use, this is, obviously, it's a budget. If the board finds that that's unacceptable right now. Applying the surplus, we can definitely change something, but that's what's in the budget currently. Intergovernmental revenues from the town of Weston, we felt pretty comfortable increasing that $10,000. We do not believe that the town's gonna drop us this year or next year for snow plowing or anything. So we bumped it up to $10,000. And the other adjustments, there's a miscellaneous $1,097 decrease. So, um, the total change for revenues was an increase of $135,903. Expenses now, so we decreased our expenses $9,529. We did add the court plan, as I said, we added the applied budget surplus. It was with the timing of everything, it was time that the Parks Department had to, um, what do you call that, change?
Update.
Update, there we go, update their plans, so we had a budget for that. Municipal court had a savings of about $5,000 that had to do with, um, the insurance that the court clerk took. And then Everest Metro had a decrease of $5,064. After looking through our.
Does the record show that the opinion is for?
As I look into our health insurance, we assumed that 100% of the employees qualify for the health incentive. We looked at it and there was a good handful that didn't, and we wanted to take that into consideration when looking at the budget and trying to sneak out some more money. So we assumed that three people did not qualify, which saves us about $3,000. We do, reduced the contingency wages, the wages that we save for merit increase. So in the past, we've put a CPI adjustment in the budget itself, so this year it's 2%. And we always kept a reserve in case people received a merit increase. We did have some people that were not up to market. Currently, I think we got everyone there, so we reduced it half. So there's still $10,200 on the books, um, but we reduced it, um, to, for some additional savings. Tax print, and here's the miscellaneous ones. So Jen and I went through and we scrounged up some more money. Tax printing was lower last year, so we thought, oh, we could cut the budget 500. The audit was lower, cut it by 1,000. The central services, that's supposed to be meeting expense, not meeting the special. Administrator, the previous administrator had quite a few additional subscriptions and memberships. Currently, our administrators not use as many, so we felt comfortable reducing that. We had maintenance vehicles, insurance went up. And then we did move 3% of wages to the farmer's market, which was just over $2,800. And we had some miscellaneous adjustments of $1,400. So there's not a lot of big changes there, but they all add up.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments?
I just, first off, I want to say I want to commend the finance for being able to come up with all the cutting, you know, cutting those expenses. I wanted to start off with that. Second, in regards to the income, you mentioned that, um, you're confident that the intergovernmental revenue is gonna, is, um, is still gonna be there. What was the actual amount that we receive for 2021 here? I'm assuming it surpassed $10,000.
Can I tell you 2020?
Oh, sure, that works too.
Okay.
Probably in the budget status report.
It is, but I just get them.
Yeah, let's look, because we have winter and then we have the other.
So for 2020, the estimate was $40,000. I think we got very close to that, if not more. And we've been budgeting, is it 35,000? 2019, we had $73,000 of revenue on that line.
Our year-to-date for Public Works is 45,295.
Thank you.
I can't.
And that's just town, correct?
That's just for the town. We do, um, street, some street maintenance, ditch mowing, and then there's snow plowing.
Michael, can you repeat the numbers again?
Uh, year-to-date for the town of Weston is $45,295.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the budget was 35,000, so we still have winter snow response. Hopefully in late December to add to.
Yeah, so we're already 10,000.
We're, the reason why we're usually more conservative with that line is because if the town were to drop us. We don't feel like we'd be dropping any staff. So that's where the hesitation is to, we want to be able to budget some, but not be able to rely on it. So there's a balance there that we're trying to, to, to meet.
I bet you can play, pay the employee no matter what.
Right, we have fixed costs that we need to be able to fund.
I guess on that one, we do charge, like, if we have an employee that works 10 hours and two hours were in the town for that day for that snow event. The eight hours of regular pay is village, and the two hours extra to get to 10 is, that, those overtime hours are charged to the town. So, and safety is like call time, if that employee responds to the town, the call time is charged to the town. Part of our agreement with the town as far as those, um, contract related services.
Any other questions at this time?
Just, Michael, what's the general transportation total? I see that you got $25,000 increase, what's the general, how much you get total?
We actually received $75,000 more this year, for, not this year, for 2022. Um, what we did, because we've been pushing off our street maintenance to a different fund. We kind of split it, so we increased $25,000 in the general funds. We matched that with the $25,000 in revenue. So it's kind of net effect for the general fund. And then the balance, the $50,000 went to the CIP to offset the street maintenance that we've been, um, shoving over there to help balance the budget in the past.
And so we're borrowing for road maintenance?
We are, but this year, we've reduced our borrowing by $75,000 with the additional, or $50,000 with the additional transportation aid.
Because I pulled up the 2022, we'll get $555,110 is our 2022 estimate for transportation aids.
How much was it again?
555,000.
Okay.
We'll ignore that hundred and ten.
Okay, yeah, so I was looking to.
Okay, listen, how we know?
Yeah, for 2022.
Yes.
Jessica, I don't think I totally understood what your comment on wages. So we're planning in the budget for wages to go up what percentage?
2%, we have a 2% CPI increase.
Back to Keith's comment about staffing and the 2% increase gonna. Meet what we need when social security checks are going up five to six.
That was what we budgeted for?
I just, I guess, I mean, if we can hold the line on benefits, perhaps the, the 2% is, you know, may, again, this is probably the special for HR. I know we're gonna have some budget challenges, you know, and, and maybe. You know, if someone were to leave, we may have to have a hiring increase or something, you know, just to kind of hold the line for a while. I, I don't know what the other, as much as I hate to say that, but.
I was just gonna add on, on the League of Wisconsin Municipalities call, there was talk about like wages and whatnot. I know, I think Madison's only increasing their wages like 1% and stuff like that. So with the capped levies, it's kind of hard to keep up with that. Because I'm, our levy increased 0.82. So like a 2% is already above that, and then you get the benefits on top of that. So it's a struggle to.
I understand.
Keep up.
Yeah, there was work done this last year to get everybody up to where they should be.
Yeah.
So we're not.
So there, there were mid-year increases in '21.
There was some bigger jumps.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I apologize for, uh, for coming in late, work, uh, work ran long, but, uh. But, uh, Director Troutman, what was the net new construction amount versus the previous year's equalized value? Uh, for.
So the net new construction this year was 0.82. We received an $11 million in growth.
It just seems with all the building that's going on around it, that it should be higher than that.
It should.
My, my area is just crazy, you know?
You have to remember that 11 million of new net new construction didn't even get us a percent. That's just putting, we, we see all this new building, we say, oh, growth is growth, growth is good. But you know how much growth we really need to get 1%? It, it's a lot. And then a lot of times with that new growth, you're requiring new services. So it's really tough to, there's a balance there, it's tough to keep up.
And how much did that add to our levy limit? And uh how much did that add to our levy limit?
Forty-three thousand dollars. So I'll I'll get to it later, but one of the changes this year, the the levy limit worksheet was a little funky this year because of the personal property aid that the state messed around with. Um I can um point that out in one of the later slides.
Okay, any other questions or can she continue? Go ahead.
Okay, so here is a sample of the public hearing notice that we'll be doing. Um it shows a point nine-nine percent increase on revenues and the same on the expenditures. Okay, so the revenues, um significant changes. The largest change you're gonna see is in the property taxes, two hundred and four thousand four ninety-seven. That does include the seventy thousand for safer that we're hoping to get with the, when we file with the state. Other taxes is that that mobile home. And intergovernmental revenues, we did receive an additional ten thousand dollars with our expenditure restraint payment that we plan on getting for next year. And it, that also includes the cable franchise fee reimbursement that we receive from the state. Licenses and permits, we decided to drop a little bit. We weren't quite getting where we needed to with the new construction. The intergovernmental charges for services, as you can, as you can see, that was where the town gets reflected, that additional ten thousand that we budgeted. Applied fund balance, we dropped that to nineteen thousand dollars this year, so that was a decrease of forty-one thousand. Twenty twenty-one operating budget revenues. What are the significant changes? Again, the the major one is property taxes on two hundred and four. And then we had the mobile home fees, personal property aid was nineteen thousand dollar increase, transportation is twenty-five thousand dollar increase, the video service aid was sixteen thousand dollar increase. Um both personal property aid and video service aids are one-time. We are not gonna see those next year. They do not. That's just the way the state changed with their rules. Um that's why we are gonna see those this year and not next year. Um decreases, we had the the pill decrease from the water utility with the equalized value. Um and the way that the calculation for the water utility is, we do anticipate seeing if not even a slight decrease, just. And then um again, the biggest decrease was the applied budget surplus of forty-one thousand. She gives us a percent budget change of two point nine-nine percent. Here's that levy limit worksheet Nate that I was talking about. As you can see, in twenty twenty, they had us add the personal property aid of sixteen thousand seven thirty-two. And if you go down below, um we had to subtract the twenty twenty-one personal property aid. And with that, it gave us a decrease in the amount of allowable levy. Next year, those numbers are gonna be the same, so it'll it'll be a null effect. That did reduce the amount that our net new construction really. Cause if you add that all together, I think it's a twenty-three thousand dollar increase that we could actually increase our levy this year. With the additional um joint fire district, we are able to increase our levy two hundred and four thousand four ninety-seven. Any questions?
Anybody?
Looking good.
Okay, the question taxes. So this is all estimated right now. The state has not come out with our final statement of assessment. So what we have to do is take our equalized value and multiply it by these, the suspected assessment ratio. So we assume our assessment ratio is gonna be close to eighty-three point four percent, meaning that the state of Wisconsin feels that we do not value our property up to where we're supposed to, or eighty-three percent of where they think we should be. Um that will be fixed hopefully with the next few years. We have hired Greg Schmidt to do a revale for us. Hopefully get that number closer to a hundred percent. But in the meantime, our total levy, we're looking at eight million eight twenty-four three ninety-three, which is gonna result in our tax rate of seven dollars and fifty-four cents, fifty-five cents, which is a increase of thirty cents over last year.
I thought what, there was gonna be a lot more than that.
Where have we been? Um here's a nice little tax history. Um last year, we increased thirty-six cents, the year before twenty-one, the year before that, thirty-three, thirty-six. So we have been averaging around um thirty cent increases. Um next year, I do not anticipate that. We're, we're hoping to be able to um levy for safer again, but if we only get our net new construction, hopefully one percent, we'll get about sixty thousand dollars in additional revenue.
So you're thinking of level off, level off more?
Yes.
Okay.
Um I'm gonna, we also have a new building that we will be borrowing, so I think we might be adjusting between more debt services here. We did not raise our levy for debt service. We kept the debt debt service levy equal on level. And then um so I don't know for what the full percentage, cause when we do, we're looking at those projections by Greg from Lers, Greg Jensen. Um he did not really have very large increases um projected. So hopefully the thirty cent increase is gonna be pretty standard in the next twenty years when we have a new building.
Okay, any questions or comments on that?
Okay, this is a a quick summary of the expenditures. Nothing too significant here. We did have a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase in public safety, general funds twenty-three thousand, public works thirty-eight thousand, culture and rec increase of twenty-four thousand and conservation development twenty-two. That negative ten down there, that's where I was saying before, we decreased the contingency for wages um at ten thousand dollars. So that's where that was reflected. The expenditure change, we're gonna walk through this before. Nothing much has really changed. We do have adopted operating budgets for safer and adopted operating budgets for Everest Metro and um Everest Municipal Court. So all those numbers are pretty good now. Any questions on this screen?
One?
Okay, we're gonna go pretty quick through all these, all other funds. Um this is what we went through. We spent a lot of time on it a week ago. Once there, nothing significantly has changed in these funds. If you have questions, let me know, but this um slide shows the refuse recycling, the great fun, which is our urban funds, Tiff District One and the Weston Aquatics Center.
Oh, is the garbage going to be going up? I thought you said no, but I can't.
No, we, we have enough um room in the fees that we collect to cover the increase of three percent.
Okay.
We are gonna have to watch to see what next year comes. If fuel does end up bumping up and we get a fuel surcharge, we may have to um consider increasing the rates for next year.
I thought you had said no, but yet I was wondering with the fuel. Okay, anyone? Go ahead.
Okay, so the all other funds, these are Tiff ones, A Tiff one, CDA room tax, Tiff two, CDA Tiff two and room tax. Um nothing has changed in any of these funds. Are there any additional questions?
See, I don't know if this is where I want to bring it up, but I read an article where they were talking that after the first of the year, they anticipate the federal government not start um moving or type things that bond issues could start going up.
Yeah, we're watching that. We're hoping that.
Yeah, I I read that article and I thought, oh, that's not good news.
It's, it's not good news. They are definitely gonna be looking at it in the first quarter of next year. I'm not sure. We should probably give Greg a call and see what his thoughts are.
It's been moving much.
Rates, yeah, they've moved up to five-year and ten-year. Our full felt twenty, thirty basis points. Yeah, I mean, they're moving up and I would expect them to be a little higher by year end, yeah.
Yeah, cause the, this article had said that after the first of the year, the government is gonna kind of relax some things or either complete, you know? Okay.
Yeah, this screen is, it shows our civic social, which includes the farmer's market and the park rec. We wanted to let you know, we did move roughly two thousand eight eighty in wages and benefits to the farmer's market. That's approximately three percent of the of somebody's time.
Mm-hmm.
Debt service, uh nothing has changed here. You can see the levy for taxes is the same, at one point four million dollars. We continue to pay off our geo notes and our CDA bonds. The CDA bonds again are for our Tiff districts. Next one, uh Tiff capital funds, nothing has changed here. This is our capital equipment. It includes streets and one forty-one is building, forty-two is streets and forty-four is equipment. The only change here is some adjustments for Everest Metro. They increased the cost for the vehicles. That number got increased by like two thousand dollars, something like that. And then the um safer will be increasing for the, we put it in there already, for the amount that about three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the, a portion of the ladder truck for the next year's budget. We will be, as a reminder, we will be bringing up capital plan, the CIP plan, um probably for the November meeting. We hope to have a more thorough walkthrough of all the projects that are gonna be looked at in the next five years and hopefully we can get an approved plan um by the end of January. Utilities, there's, nothing's changed here. We have the water utility fund. Store utility did change. We received an email from Red Mountain Metro and they reduced our projected expense by sixty-five thousand dollars. So that was always a good thing. And then stormwater funds, nothing's changed. Okay, we made it through budget. Now what? Where are we going? We've talked about this last time. There needs to be a comprehensive look at what, at the village as a whole. And what does that include? That includes a strategic plan in combination of a financial plan. Next one. We need to create a plan for the future that we can afford. That includes a service analysis, an in-depth look at the services we provide, and really much the services that our residents expect. What does that include in the future? Maybe a referendum, joint ventures? Referendum, we, we've talked about joint ventures. I think in the future, as Marcus stated before, when he shared his experience at the Everest Metro, we need to have a really good conversation with our partners. And that can't necessarily be the day that the budget's supposed to be adoptioned. We need to, if we're gonna be a joint venture, we need to be all in, everybody in, and not just looking at the community with a larger tax levy. Um we have a larger tax levy, but we also have a lot of additional expenditures. Um one of the things I looked at with City of Schofield and the Village of Weston is I looked at the operations levy. The operations levy compared to their portion for Everest Metro. Uh surprisingly, we're really close. Um the City of Schofield, fifty-three percent of their operating levy went to Everest Metro and for the Village of Weston, fifty-five percent of our operating levy went to Everest Metro. The town, the way out left field, um sixty-seven percent of their levy goes to um Everest Metro. Their levy was only a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars or something like that, so. It's very interesting, but um I think joint ventures are perfect. We need to really look at them, but we also need it to be a joint venture and everyone pulling their own weight. Um questions?
A quick question about uh the idea of a public safety referendum. Uh given, uh first off, I don't think anyone would dispute that there is a legitimate need. But legally, how do you, how does that work? Is there a fixed set of time? Is there a fixed dollar amount? Uh how does, how does that work?
I am not an expert at referendums.
Like the, you mean, hell, like April or November of, if there was general election then?
Right. Mm-hmm.
I guess, I'm sure that I know there are other rules. We need to look into those.
So for finance specifically, our concern is you can't just go and ask for, say, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Because right now, we can't keep up with the annual increases. Our levy, our level levy increases fifty thousand dollars. The wages alone for Everest Metro exceed that. So that's where we need to be able to go and say, hey, we need more money, but we actually need more money continuously.
Right.
Because that net new construction, even uh if we get approved an extra two hundred thousand dollar levy, that net new construction times that two hundred thousand dollars doesn't keep up with the additional expenditures. So it just needs to be a very well-planned uh path for that, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't work to just ask for a set amount. You're gonna have to have a continuation type thing.
And other uh communities have declared that they will join. So everyone involved will join us.
There's the stickler. What if somebody passes and we don't or vice versa?
We have a stickler, yeah.
That, that would be, I mean, that's where your joint venture, you need to have a a really good discussion.
I thought it was done and then I went, there's another.
No, we got one more. So the next item on the agenda after budget discussions is uh the public hearing notice. So I have it up on the board for you. Um as we did last year, when I got the final numbers, I emailed everyone a copy of what was gonna be published. And then um I wanted you to let me know if we needed to call a meeting. Because I don't have the final numbers from the state. I can't tell you what our tax rate for sure is gonna be. Um so that's where I am looking for permission to do the same. Does anyone have any feelings on that?
Any questions or concerns? How good do you feel about the estimation uh or your estimation of the state's numbers?
I'm pretty happy, but the state, we have lost some value. If you look at the calculation, the nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, we reduced by approximately eight million dollars in assessed value to. That's ridiculous. We didn't lose eight million dollars in value. So what happened was that tit assessed value went up. And the way we determined that two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seven million number is we took the total increment, multiplied it by the assessed value, and we got two hundred and seventy million. And obviously, one point one six minus two seventy gives us the, the eight ninety-nine. So that's basically math, but we're not happy with it, cause we talked to Greg Schmidt and we didn't lose eight million dollars. We lost approximately two million dollars. Our personal property, um the personal property assessment um went down one point two. And then we, we, we no longer have J B, GMB produce, which was about a million. So we did have two million dollars in assessed value that decreased. That's part of the reason why we're seeing an increase in our rate of thirty cents. If we assumed that um we didn't, that assessment ratio didn't change, I think the rate was a two cent increase.
It was a penny.
A penny increase, yeah. Which makes more sense. Which makes more sense, it's, we had seven million dollars in additional assessed value. And you just don't see that in the calculation, which is, sorry, long story short, we are happy, but we're not happy, we don't like what it looks like. But I'm pretty confident that's it.
I guess, I guess, Mark, that would be for you, cause it would be the board that would be doing this. Are we gonna be happy with just, um, accepting what we have, or do, or are we gonna wanna meet?
What's the consensus of the board? I'm fine. Lauren, yes? Yi?
Um, I, I guess the question is, oh, when, if we're gonna meet, when are we gonna?
The twen, next week, Monday.
We're, we're questioning that we don't need to meet.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah, I was going, do you want to meet, yes, no?
Yeah, and the question, uh, I, I, so if we do meet, it would be next week, Monday.
Yes, in order to stay on our timeframe and adopt the third Monday in November.
I'm advocating not meeting, that I'm fine as it comes. How's everybody else? Lauren?
Well, I think whatever changes might be coming from the state isn't gonna be a drastic number.
No.
Okay. Barb?
I have no problem, I guess I would kind of like to get an email or.
I, I, I plan on emailing everybody out the final publication prior to it going to the paper, and just let me know.
Yeah, I mean, just, I wouldn't wanna be a big shock if something really changed, you know?
Yi? Yeah, I have no objection, uh, no, we don't need to meet.
Okay, I'm good. Hey, I'm good. See, I'm fine with that also. There we go.
Okay.
But.
Okay, that it then? Okay, policy issues, discussions and recommendations, anything? Okay, resolutions and ordinances, nothing, future items, next meeting date? Uh, this is for, uh, finance, correct? Monday, October twenty-fifth.
That would be if, if needed.
If needed.
We're saying no to that.
We said no to that, so we don't have to. Um, then we won't have a joint budget meeting then?
I don't plan on it.
Okay.
Much, if, we can have a regular finance meeting.
Okay.
On the fifteenth.
Okay.
Any topics for future meetings? This is finance, so.
Right.
Okay, remarks from staff, anything? Remarks from committee members?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
Anything from board members?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I, I think we're talking about a referendum, I think we may, we probably should start the whole process, even though it's, it could be quite ways down the hill. I have a feeling it'll take a while for us to get this correct and so we don't step on our own feet and represent this in a logical and organized fashion and clearly stated so that we cover all the bases that we think, uh, are going to be a issue.
I agree, we gotta get started, yeah.
Can we put that on our next meeting's or next month's agenda?
Um, we need to put it on the agenda, or do we?
Well, if, what were you thinking? We can always defer action.
The board must take action on anything, would have to be on the agenda, yes.
Right.
Right. Just people cared for a lot of questions, we won't have any answers.
I, I heard.
Yeah.
I guess, what I wanna know is what are the, the rules and when can you do it? I can't remember, I thought, was it the school board? I can't remember that they could only have a referendum at certain times or whatever.
And that's what we'll have to identify, yeah.
They did change that rule, it used to be you could only have the referendum, um, fall election. Um, they had changed that because it's almost impossible to budget that way.
Okay, I knew there was something with the, with the school boards on their referendums and I couldn't remember what it, that it had to be held at a certain time and I couldn't remember it.
Okay. Mr. President, we can't have just a topic for discussion and maybe that's more apt until we have more information.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else from board members? Okay, any announcements? Other than, uh, wishing, uh, Ryan Simmons, uh, good luck on the police commission, he's resigning from tourism and finance. And, uh, we have a vote tonight to appoint him to, uh, the police commission, so thank you for the service. You, you're leading two good committees and I'm not, I'm just gonna. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you walk in, I'm sorry. I didn't realize Chief Holt was here. All right.
Okay, uh, motion to, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For vendor?
Second.
Second for Simmons? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, we are adjourned at six oh eight.
Same, uh, motion for the board?
Moved to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Manel on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, um, one minute, break?